Next, we move to the information items. Item A in information items is the McKinley ALC presentation. Principal Al Johnson. Welcome, Al. Good to see you.
Good to see you as well.
Great name, too.
Absolutely, absolutely. Thank you for the opportunity to come tell you about McKinley. Super excited, super excited. We are there. We're gonna go here. McKinley, this is my third school year at McKinley. And what I have, let me restate that. What we have really tried to do at McKinley is embrace this district's mission. Realizing that we weren't there three years ago. There were some items on there that I really couldn't say with fidelity. We were really there. We wanted to get there. We were striving to get there, but there were some obstacles. Today, I can say, man, we're real, real close. We're very, very close. My staff at McKinley are fantastic, doing tremendous work. And I'm gonna talk about that in a little bit. If you could take a moment, though, please just watch this short video. What we try to do here at McKinley is help students that are behind in credits, possibly, help them accelerate their learning so they can graduate on time. That's our number one of our number one goals. Their other goal is if at any point a child has gone through any sort of trauma in their life, and that could be a variety of things, that trauma has caused them to want to learn in a smaller learning environment that has nothing to do with the moniker that we're gonna give to your child. McKinley, again, is the place. We've got courses and flexibility in our scheduling where students can come to school for four and a half hours, up to eight hours a day. That's what we can do here.
The students at McKinley have many opportunities to volunteer in the community and do service learning projects. We work with many different organizations in the community, such as Catholic Charities, the VA, different schools in the community. They have the opportunity to build their resume and get some community engagement.
Here at McKinley, we have some Focus Fridays where we try to work on some community skills with our students. We also have programs called IPAS. IPAS is a program that we use to deliver social skills to our students and also to develop rapport with one another. And it kind of gives our school a community sense.
We're here to support them. We're here to help them understand and develop their potential. We're here to provide as many successful experiences as we can. We're here to give them a place where they can feel safe. We're here to give them a place where there's some stability.
FOCUS stands for fostering opportunities for character development and day in success. So we do have a curriculum that we work on social skills, soft skills, some career skills, and we build some leadership, team building, also do some assistance with their academics in their classes and help the students stay caught up in where they need to be to be able to graduate on time.
The teachers are really great and supportive. It's a great community of people to work with for school. You're in small groups, so you always can get the one-on-one help you need.
Basketball program, great positive for our boys. A lot of kids are now going to school because they have basketball to look forward to. Within the basketball program, we have a boys group where we allow our boys to come in and talk about stuff that bothered them, stuff that's going on in their daily life.
It's a great place to be. A lot of kids really like to come into the gym. And it's a lot of exciting stuff. We've got lots of music and everything. And the kids, for classes that they need to blow off some steam, they love doing it in the gym because it clears their mind and gets them back to the class.
When we're not working out of the traditional curriculum, we're doing a lot of hands-on stuff. This week, we're exploring a million. We wanted to know if a million of our textbooks would fit in our classroom. So we started out by guessing and documented that.
We feel we are meeting these needs or are meeting these needs. We're creating a learning environment that the students know that they're cared for and loved. And I wanna use the word "loved." Okay? We care internally. We make it a heart thing with our kids. Once we get here, we build on self-esteem by adding rigorous curriculum, showing them their successes as they go along, to get them to self-actualization.
She's excelling in the classes. They do a real good job of one-on-one, making sure that they get their work done and the help that they need. I really appreciate what McKinley High School does for my daughter.
McKinley proud. McKinley proud.
McKinley proud.
McKinley proud, baby.
McKinley proud.
McKinley proud.
Wow, what a cool school. I'm gonna ask you to go with me. I'm gonna give you some information you may have had before, but I just wanna remind us of some things. And this will help me, help you hopefully, understand what we try to do at McKinley and why we're there. 1970, September the 7th was my first day at kindergarten. My mom got me these 64-pack of Crayola crayons. And what's it say? With the built-in sharpener. It's the only one I have. What a fabulous memory of kindergarten. And that's how I started my education. That very night, right next door, an explosion. Huge explosion. Blew up almost half of our house. I will never forget that day. Those two things, fantastic crayons, and then something really, really traumatic. I was five years old. What happens to a lot of kids, unfortunately, is they go through periods of trauma. Okay? Most kids, once or twice early on, and that's about it. But what I'm finding is a number of McKinley students, they're experiencing complex post-traumatic stress disorder, meaning that it's continual. It's going up and down, and that's their life. And it has an effect on their learning. Sometimes they have no hope, sometimes. What we look to do at McKinley is to provide hope. We recognize that some students may come to us with some trauma, so we look to address that, to address the whole child. We've made a commitment. These acts of trauma can be considered risk factors. Risk factors get in the way of students' education. And there's many studies on this. And we're able, at our school, to name them. What are the risk factors that can come into our building that can prevent students from learning? Because make no mistake, any student on any given day can come into any of our buildings with something blocking them from learning, or a risk that's blocking them from learning. Our job as educators is to find out what that is, work with the student and the family to help them overcome it. We have decided at McKinley that not again in our watch will we be a barrier for someone to graduate. I honor Ally Campbell. I honor her. We hold ourselves accountable because this young lady was a signature away from graduating. And that could've gotten her out of the situation. But she has had experienced, in her life, some things that most kids should not have had to experience. Our job as educators and as a school district, I pray, is to put systems, policies, and things in place to help the Ally Campbells of the world. Maslow's hierarchy of needs tells us this story. If we're not meeting the needs at the bottom echelon of this pyramid, it's very difficult to ask a kid to be super creative and reach self-actualization. So at McKinley, we've got a lot of new initiatives. We have to go breakfast at the very beginning of the day. We meet the kids right there as they come in. We wanna make sure that all of our kids are, have something in their stomachs if they're hungry. Good water. A restful, calm environment for our students. There are the pieces, making sure that McKinley is a safe place to be. And thank you, board, for a lot of the good work that you've done to help McKinley achieve some of these goals as far as safety is concerned. Those are some of the basic things that we have to do. And it's in our mission statement, right? McKinley is there now. We are really getting good at building strong, loving relationships with our students. And that's where we want to be. Students that have experienced trauma, they may have missed a lot of that stuff. When they come to McKinley, our staff are specialists, designed and skilled at meeting those needs. We serve all students at McKinley. These are demographics. Fifty percent of our students are white students from our communities and around. I'll show you some numbers on how we are pulling students from outside of our school And of all needs, EL, special education, free and reduced lunch, and homeless. Risk factor for schools. These are some things that I've noticed in the past that we've addressed at McKinley. Low academic expectation and performance, lack of staff collaboration. And my staff, our staff, they are blended together. They work very, very well together. But if that were not happening, that's a risk factor for a child. Low commitment, teacher, administrator. If I'm not buying in, if I'm not giving my full 100% effort, that could hurt my students. The physical structure of the building is a risk factor in a school. If I'm not proud of to go there, okay? If I can't say, this is my place where I go to school, if it's falling apart, that hurts children. Having a poor school image. People saying, I don't wanna go there because of what they think it represents is a risk factor. And then we don't trust one another. And I apologize. My intent is not to offend anyone. But when I came to McKinley three years ago, I did not like the way it looked. It physically made me uncomfortable. And if I'm feeling that way, what about my kids? You all did, the children of this St. Cloud area, and any kid that comes to McKinley, a great service when you invested in them. That's a high school campus of an alternative high school. Absolutely. Now, it looks the part. That's technical change, but that's a fantastic start. A new secured entrance. Students noticed that day one, and they were like, wow, this is my school. Staff feels safer. We're able to control the flow of students in and out of the building and adults in and out of the building. We need to be able to do that. Brand-new office. The culture in my office is fantastic. New computer lab. The issue with the achievement gap is there's lack of opportunities. Now, we're giving our students more opportunities and more educational opportunities at McKinley. These are protective factors. Protective factors that may seem, they're the counterbalances to the risk factors. And if you know anything about the adverse childhood experiences, these are the counterbalances to ACEs. Caring adults. I've got a wonderful new assistant principal, Mr. Robert Murray. He's gonna be mad because that's not the picture he wants up there. And he's sitting right here. But let me tell you, when you have caring adults in the building, again, it makes the world of difference. Caring adults that will hold students accountable for what they have done and where they need to go at all costs. Hallie Miller, our new behavior resource specialist. Last year, she was our SRO. What does it say about this district that she left Wake Park Police Department to come work for our district, to work with our kids? And how do you think the kids that were here last year feel knowing that she's there for them? These are the numbers of our building. We've got a number of programs at McKinley. Our SHAP program is our senior high school alternative program, 184 students. Our PACE program, which is independent study, 214 students. And our afternoon independent study program right now has 19 students. We are also pulling from outside of the district. In our day programs, we have a total of 43 students. Where the additional learning comes in is when we were given the opportunity to expand our learning day at McKinley. So now, students can come four days a week from 8:30 a.m. till 6:00 p.m. So they can, if need be, they can work a full-time job and still come to school if they're supporting their family or supporting themselves. 19 students in our evening school, 223 students in our night school. That's a lot of kids. And then from there, 12 students that are outside of our district. Summer school, we pull in, this past summer, 636 students, which means that McKinley is about the same size as Tech and Apollo with 1,200, nearly 1,300 students that we service in one school year. You won't see that on MDE's website when you look at our student numbers, but those are the actual numbers as of two days ago. New policies at McKinley are helping our students feel safe, our no-cellphone policy. Here's the reason. We know drama happens in a split second on a cellphone. It gets into the way of learning during the day. And I've seen tragedy because of cellphones. We've made a commitment at McKinley that not in our building, not in our space, for four and a half hours or for five hours, you can be without your cellphone because you're coming here to be educated. We had a couple kicks and screams and moans at the beginning of the school year, just a couple. What we got more now, students and teachers saying, thank you for having that policy because as a student, I'm more engaged. I know I wasn't paying attention before. Teachers saying, I can see it different. My students are more engaged, and I'm not fighting that battle. That is a good thing. Now, I don't know how you do that at Tech and Apollo with 1,200 students, but I know how I can do it with 600, 400, 500 students in my building. McKinley Recovery School, another educational opportunity for our kids, not just in St. Cloud but in surrounding areas. We are now one of six recovery schools in the state of Minnesota. We were not serving a population of students. Students that, because of trauma, have resorted to self-medication and have become addicted. When that happens, they will more likely have to go into treatment. When they go into treatment at Recovery Plus or Clarus House, when they go into treatment, when they come back out, the number-one risk factor for them using again was school. We now can put them into a chemical-free learning environment where teachers now rotate through the classroom, old-school style. They do not, they do not mix with the rest of the students, which is fine. It helps them maintain sobriety. We've had 10 total students this school year. Right now, we have four current students, and we've had one graduate from our recovery Adaptive change. Our students now are having a positive self-identity of being associated with our building. Staff empowerment, a lot. Let me restate that. Most, if not all, of the changes, positive changes at McKinley has been a collaboration and staff feeling that they can say, hey, Mr. Johnson, this is something that we need to do to better our school, to help our kids. And you can see the outcomes. Positive school culture. Come visit our school. Come take a walk around. You get your own, take, get your own impression of what it feels like at McKinley. And a positive public image. We're looking and trying very hard to be good neighbors so that someone that lives near McKinley can be proud of the building that sits there, knowing that we're in there doing our best to be a good neighbor to them. Creating opportunities for our students now to be out and affect our world. These pro-social involvements. We have a student on the site council. We've sent students to the legislature, our MAPS stars. Right now, they're competing down in Minneapolis or down in Bloomington. At this competition of the nine teams, nine of them made it to the semifinals, six of them made it to the finals. They're doing fantastic. We sent a number of students, five students, to the Holocaust Museum. These are opportunities that are expanding these young people's minds. They are gonna come back, and they have come back, and they're on fire. They wanna do more. The more opportunities you give someone, the more experience you give them, their trajectory goes here, towards success. Student mentoring. We believe in teaching our children at McKinley. Now, these young men happen to look just like me. And so, myself, Mr. Murray, and the other adults in our building, we make sure that they know that they're loved, they're cared for, and that we have very high expectations of them academically and socially. Some of the results. Notice the behavior counts trending down dramatically. The top one is the referrals. 451 referrals when I came to McKinley. Down to 142. That's year-to-date. Numbers of out-of-school suspensions from 69 to 26. It's all about the relationships that we're building with our students in the building. Because if they know I care about them, okay? They're caring about me. We're not trying to harm one another, okay? We're doing what we're supposed to be doing, and we're teaching. We only have one student in our building that has more than 11 referrals. When I came back, it came in, we had nine. It's difficult to manage nine students with 11 behavior referrals because you're all over the place. We're at a place now, and here's the thing, we're not really having to manage behavior at McKinley. What we can do now is we can focus on education because we're taking that off the table. Okay, this is me just being a little, I guess I like to see myself in pictures. We have had 80 graduates to date. A number of students from 2017 that were on track and graduated a little bit early. And we've had some 2016 and some 2015 graduates. And I love it because they continue to work hard in our building to do what they have to do. And the two pictures there, there's two new mothers. What a fantastic way to start their life. And we're collecting hardware, okay? It's top-down, okay? Ms. Chris Scott in our kitchen, fantastic, her and her staff. With this, with this hopeful word, it really helps continue to validate the work that's happening at McKinley. And if she sees this picture, and I hope she's already told her husband that this is my new girlfriend, 85-years-young. You talk about a positive school image. She saw the article that was in the paper. She said she read, Mr. Johnson, I've read it three or four times. I wanna come and do something in your building. She wants to partner with us, and she lives in our community and has for years. There's been a change in Wake Park. What does tomorrow hold? And I tell my kids this, the sky is the limit. Don't listen to people outside of these walls if they're giving you something negative. Believe you can do it. Why we do what we do? Like these two young men, they were at McKinley last year, they came back and said, thank you. They're proudly to be McKinley Panthers. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Jeff. Principal Johnson, have you ever heard of Whole Brain Training?
Whole Brain Training?
Yeah. It's a spin-off from ACEs.
I have not.
Very, very good stuff. I was just at a state training for it today. I don't know if you can just interject curriculum like that, but if you want, I would get you 10 of the textbooks, if you wanted, or take a peek and see if it's worthwhile. Spread it around. It's fantastic, fantastic stuff. Just research it for me, if you would, please. And then, you already touched on my other stuff with the ACEs. Your staff was fully aware of that, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then, just a personal note, when you were playing ping-pong, you spun the ball in your hand. Caught that. I'll play you sometime. Thank you.
You're welcome. In response to the curriculum, the beautiful thing about McKinley is that we're looking for best practices, no matter where they come from, if it's going to help our students. So I'll absolutely take those 10 books.
Shannon.
I don't have a question. I just wanna tell you, I'm very touched by your passion and your commitment. And we're very fortunate to have you. Thank you.
Monica.
I have two questions. The first question is, one time, long ago, a wise man told me that the kids behave at a school as a reflect of how they react to their community around them. And I wanted to ask you about hearing this statement and telling me about, telling us, what do you think our community should be doing better for our kids?
Okay. When I look at some of my McKinley students, this is personal. Let me make one quick statement. I do nothing in isolation by myself at McKinley. I've got a fantastic staff that does the work. They follow a vision. In our community, there's two pieces. When students come out of the community to McKinley, we give them a community at McKinley. We try to build one for them there that they will learn on and take back to their homes if it's not a productive community. Outside of McKinley, what I would ask for is, please, let's educate people on the work. Let's educate our community about trauma, what it looks like. Let's educate our community about what risk and protective factors are because some moms and dads may not have been taught. They may not know it's not okay to do certain things in front of a child because that's how they were taught, okay? I'm not faulting anyone, but it is about education. And so, we being educational leaders, we need to be out in our communities, having these little seminars about ACEs, about the whole brain. We should be having those. And then showing our families what we're doing, what it does to the brain, how it changes it, okay? And then, how they can partner with the schools if they don't have the skills to get there to help their kid.
My second question is that about, how have you been working in the school? And I see great changes that you have been doing. We just had, a couple of days ago, the review of our strategic planning. And I'd like you to tell us a little bit more about what has the strategic planning of the district has done for you in your direction about the school.
Well, you know, the strategic plan of the district has allowed me to look at that and say, if this is where the district wants to go, allow me to do this because it'll get us there. It's been freeing.
Mr. Johnson, I have a question, too, but I'm gonna, my question comes out of a couple of reflections, and I'm just gonna share those reflections with you, if I may, please. I was listening carefully when you were talking about facility and relationships and how those are vital to the mission and the accomplishments, achievements of students at McKinley also. In terms of your pro-social involvement, I think I saw that on exhibit on Tuesday in a nine-hour strategic planning session. There was a young woman, young woman, one of your students from McKinley, who was there with other students. And this person was about the most confident, composed, convincing, articulate person that I, that I've seen, you know, maybe ever. It just, it just caught me, not by surprise, but it just took my breath away. And so, if, she's coming from McKinley. Some of what she had there on display that day was, was incubated, planted and incubated at McKinley, I'm sure. And so, that's gonna be part of my question. The second reflection I wanna make is kind of a reflection that's been in my life as an educator that I've always reminded myself. And I'm not the only person that, when I have conversations with people in education that talk about this, but we almost always agree that education is a very- agree that education is a very noble calling and we almost always agree that it's a very, very satisfying career. And we almost always agree that it's very personally enriching and meaningful. So with those reflections, if I may, please, I'm just gonna ask a question that, and I, I bet if I worked at this question, I would get it even, it would be better posed to you, but I'm just gonna put it out there. What's at the core of Al Johnson? What's that, what's the core? What is the driving that motor? And, and, and I bet I could ask the same question of Robert, but, but I'm just gonna ask you that question. Tell me what's going on there with you, please.
Okay. So what's at my core? I'm gonna use "I" then. I'm really selfish. I'm really selfish. I want to change the world. I truly mean that. One child at a time. Frustrated with another school district that I grew up in because it let me fly under the radar and fall through the cracks. Do not want to see that happen again. If Al Johnson can be a principal in his third school year in St. Cloud, any student coming through our system right now can do it also. And I don't want to stop pushing until there's more Al Johnsons. Underserved, overlooked, hurting child. We've got to love them up. We've got to see them, we've got to look for them. They're in our classrooms, they're sitting in our chairs. Some of them look like me, some of them look just like you and you'll never know it. And the time is now. We don't have time to mess around. I do push. I know I pushed at the district. I know I beg Amy Scalarut for money. Please, give me a little more money. I know I'm over on my staffing. It's not for me. It's a heart thing. Mr. Moes, it's a heart thing. And I love these children. I do.
That's great. I appreciate that answer. That was a tough question and to me, you just, you just hit it out of the ballpark. Thank you for sharing that. I'm too old now, but I'd like to come and interview to be a teacher at your building. I have a license, but I'm, I'm supposed to be retired, but...
Can you teach science?
Science, I can do that, I can do that.
Hope.
Thank you.
Thank you for a great presentation. A few years ago, I got trained to do volunteer work for the Children's Law Center and they represent foster children, that is, we represent foster children who are in their teenage years and are struggling with the court system, mostly not because of them, but because of, they get bounced around from place to place. And I had a client who bounced her way through Apollo and through the ALC. And while she was there, somebody diagnosed her with oppositional defiance disorder. Of course, she'd been through, if I told her life story, and that would take, you know, one hour, but you're at the talk about moving from place to place, being abandoned by your parents, having to take care of your children, your siblings, lasting for three months at a one foster home, moving some other place and so on and so forth. In the event, when I came to know her and work with her, she had been transferred out of our school district and out to a school, school district, mostly white rural western Stearns County. And she was turning her life around and, but still facing lots of obstacles. And I said to her, "What turned your life around?" And she said, "They put me in a high school where the teachers, the counselors, the principals treat you like family." And they, no matter what I did, they invested in me. And I began to believe in myself and I, she started taking advanced courses and they'd put her in special education and she went down and signed out of special education for oppositional defiance disorder. And she said, "Treat me like everybody else." And she's now graduated from me and she's over at St. Cloud State University, which is tremendously unusual for these kids that have been through the foster care system, graduating in three years. And so this is by way of endorsement of your idea that kids need adults who care for them in an environment that's a substitute family, that the people that they're, the adults and the kids that they're with are, are like family. And so what you said and the way you described it was certainly inspirational to me.
Jeff.
Principal Johnson, I just got a couple of things. Thank you for giving me the tour when it was under construction. Can you please tell us about your garden? And am I invited to the cookout this summer? You do have an annual get-together, right? Can you tell us about those?
Absolutely, absolutely. Right now, we have about 115 tulips coming up in our peace garden. And so it's going to be beautiful. The snow today is not helping, it's kind of prolonging them coming up, but give us a few weeks and drive by McKinley on the east side of the building and it's going to be absolutely beautiful. Our flower and crab has a ton of blooms on it. And, and here's the thing, it is for our community. We made very sure that when we planted that flower and crab right in the middle, that we dedicated it to a police officer from Wake Park that had passed away. Every plant there is dedicated to either a staff member or a community member that has lost someone. It is to bring peace, absolutely. And so, and our, our neighbors are absolutely enjoying that. When we have our community barbecue, you're all invited. Fantastic food and fun is had by everyone. And that will be probably the second week of September, second or third week of September.
Bruce Sanchez.
Thank you for your presentation, Principal Johnson. When Board Member Moes asked you the question about what is at your core, I felt like I wanted to raise my hand and try to answer it based on what I've seen from you and, and what I've heard tonight. But clearly, you're a man with a great passion for public education, but someone who believes that kids want to learn, that all kids want to learn and that all kids can learn if we can create an environment for them that is supportive of them. And so you design and your staff, design an educational environment that addresses their risk factors, or the risk factors of kids and develops these protective factors that allows them to learn. And to me, that's just such a great testament to what you're accomplishing at McKinley and what I hope really all of our principals and school leaders are trying to do. It's inspiring to hear that kind of vision for what kids can accomplish, even kids who have faced a lot of difficulty in their life. So thank you for the job that you and your staff are doing there.
So before Willie, I'll say a couple of things here. I think Willie would be disappointed if I didn't say this one. A few weeks ago, it was, my father passed away a few weeks ago and I was given the opportunity to give a memorial speech or a memorial at his funeral. And in that memorial, my dad was a teacher for many, many, many years and then followed with a long, long retirement, which was awesome. But I brought up Maslow's Hierarchy of Needs, just as you did there. And I, and I basically said the same thing. And I, I was relating it to the fact that with my parents and with my mom and my dad, as I grew up as a child, those bottom, the bottom of the pyramid, I never had to think about. I always felt safe, I was always taken care of. I didn't, I didn't have a worry in the world. All I had to do was live in the top of the pyramid. And it, to me, it was just unthinkable that every kid didn't live that way. And as I've grown, I've seen that there are a lot of kids who do experience a lot of trauma. And I, in fact, I think it's the majority of kids experience some forms of trauma in their childhood that affect them and their ability to learn. And in my odd way, I read, you know, I said that every week I read the mission statement of the school district before our school board meetings. And so I read it at the funeral and then I said, "Now I'm going to rewrite that for you," using Maslow's hierarchy. And it went something like, "Our mission is to create a safe and caring climate and culture in which for a period of time each day, the children that we serve can live in the top of the pyramid and experience their lives in a way in which they can learn and become better people before we send them back home for the evening and they have to experience that trauma all over again." And so I was just saying, it's, it's amazing, you know, my dad chose a career in which that is really, I mean, you hit the nail on the head when you said that, that's what you do. And I just know from working with you in the past and, and the, your personality and your leadership, that you are a tremendous person to be chosen to work in this school, which really has some of the more, I shouldn't say difficult, it's a bad choice of words, but it's the more needy subset of children who need even more of that. And I, I mean, it's just amazing to watch how you work, so great job.
I'm gonna listen to that back and I'm gonna steal that.
And Chair Dahlgren, I was there that, that afternoon when you spoke at your father's funeral. And when Al was getting ready to do his presentation, I remember looking at that triangle, that Maslow's, and I remember thinking of things that you had said and I, during that moment when he was presenting it here. I'm glad that you brought that up because I recognized it and not be able to see that you recognize that he's saying the exact same thing. Principal Johnson, and so I, I like that because I like the fact that everybody here said, "Principal Johnson." They didn't say Al, okay? I know Al, but I love the fact that everybody said, "Principal Johnson." And so I believe we're fortunate to be able to call it, "Principal Johnson and Principal Murray," ours, okay? It's, it's completely obvious that their passion, their vision, it's contagious. The kids are benefiting, but more importantly, our community is benefiting. And so from me to you, I would like to say, "Thank you for making us look good, but personally, thank you for making me look good." And that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.